Okay, we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order for February 27th, 2018, City Council meeting, City of Barstown. Uh, will anybody from the audience that needs to speak to the council this evening or speak to us? Okay, we'll move down then to bids and contracts. Turn it over to Jessica for the actual on this and several other things this evening.
We have our annual chemical bid that we do every year to set pricing for all of the chemicals that we use at the water and wastewater treatment plant for this coming year. And this is something we do all every year. And as you can see on the bid tab, the folks in yellow highlighted are the recommended company for that particular chemical. So if there's any questions, I would mind answering those at this time.
These are pretty much the same companies that bid this stuff every year, but I'm never correct.
Correct, correct. There's, you know, always, and if you notice, some companies will only bid certain chemicals, and those are the chemicals that they have the ability to supply. So there's usually kind of a long vendor list, but it's because of that, not every vendor is able to bid on every single chemical.
Are there any of the, this makes my eyes water. Is there any of them in here that are not the lowest bid, but are, but they meet your specs better than the?
Yes.
Usually they are, so I just.
Yes, there's one in the wastewater bid, um, that there was only two bidders, and we ran into this before. The Olic provider provided a bid for a chemical that is not the same. It's similar to a bioxide type chemical, and that's not the odor control chemical that we specified. Uh, we trialed their product, I think it's called Nitronox, and it just wasn't as effective for reducing those odors. So that's why even the, it's a sole source at this point, the odor control odor terminator is a product that we have found to have more success, even though it's more expensive. The only other item you'll find that is not the low bidder, it's only that not the low bidder by, oh goodness, less than a penny, you know, less than half a penny. And that is a result of, um, kind of some trust issue with that particular chemical. The Brentag for sodium thiocyanate sulfate, that's a deep chlorination chemical, and Brentag is our current provider of that. And the, it's low bidder, uh, we had had an issue with, the chemical had been supplied the previous year, and there was an issue where the chemical that was delivered and labeled, that's not the chemical that was in the container, and there was an accident within, involved with an employee. So there's a little bit, there's a trust issue going on in there, and for less than half a penny, um, we felt more comfortable staying with Brentag at this point.
Any other questions, Jessica, on this chemical bid tab?
Mayor, if there wouldn't be any more questions, I'll entertain a motion to approve the bid tag presented by our city engineer.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the recommendation of city engineer for the chemicals.
Second.
Second, the councilman Williams, is there any other discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion is carried. Okay, Jessica, then, uh, you want to talk us through the right-of-way and the new five-star store alley.
North Third? Mm-hmm. Yes, the new five-star going in at the corner, it's a corner lot on North Third at Flamingo and Downs Avenue. And there was a traffic study, and the traffic counts warranted widening of Flamingo and Downs Lane in order to handle that, the increased traffic, and provide some safe maneuvering in and out of the facility. In order to do that, because they are having a diesel fuel system station in the rear that is, will allow, you know, the ability for tractor trailers to come in and fuel up. Uh, they were allowed, needing some large radiuses and so forth. And Downs Avenue is a very narrow street at this point, so they agreed they're going to be widening Downs, but in order to make it wide enough, they needed to dedicate about six more feet, I believe, uh, of right-of-way on their side of the street. You can kind of see there's a little jog there along Downs. And that's really all this is for, is that the widening was no longer going to make, stay in the right-of-way, and this is just making sure that that road width is within public right-of-way, so that as we take over the improvement, once it's installed, we have the ability to maintain that.
And then I think off the legal, there's going to be a left-hand turn lane, there's a moving law on Downs as well.
There's not a turn lane on Downs, it's just widening and it, widening, widening to about 26 feet. Um, but there is a turn lane being proposed for, on Flamingo, but there was enough existing right-of-way to be able to handle that transition, that additional lane. It's really a formality, just making sure we go through that process.
Uh, Jessica, we had this conversation before, I think I had it with you. Uh, that's an area where we have frequent accidents, and so, uh, but as, as it stands right now, there's no plans by the state to consider putting a light there, is that correct?
That's correct. There was a request put in by the State Department, and the way their guidelines seem to work with their criteria for determining whether a light is warranted, they don't allow in their calculations projected traffic numbers. So I think the turn lanes will help a lot of that, some of the traffic flow and patterns, but if it continues to increase congestion as a result, then they'll reevaluate it at that time. But because they weren't allowed, able to, to assume those future counts, they said at this time, they weren't, um, going to pursue a light, but they didn't rule it out altogether in the future.
Any other questions? Okay, uh, we need a motion now to accept, uh, this additional property as a city right-of-way. It'll be coming from Newcomers Five Star Property and, uh, agree to handle the maintenance on that additional right-of-way we're acquiring.
I'll make a motion.
Your motion, the councilman Buckland, second.
Second.
Second, the councilman Copeland, any other discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion is carried. Thank you. Okay, now we're going to go to QK4's proposal for engineering services for our multi-use path on 245. Jessica, you're still?
Still on deck. Um, this is for the engineering services by QK4, that's already been previously, uh, recommended and, uh, approved by the council to move forward with, with entering into an agreement. This is just the actual agreement based on the fee schedule and the cost, projected construction cost estimate for the overall project. So this is their actual dollar amount fees, um, for the multi-use path on 245.
And you, Jessica, on, I noticed in the terms and agreements, it says that the construction drawings, that they retain basically ownership of those, uh, drawings and specifications, and that we have a, we will have a reproducible copy, but if we make copies, that they're compensated the way I read this. Is that normal? I thought those would become ours if it's.
That doesn't appear to be normal. Uh, it's not something that we've had normal practice doing. Normally, once we pay for our design, those drawings become ours.
Right.
Obviously, they would have to maintain a copy of those drawings.
Right, uh, uh, exact kind of, and I'm not saying cost, but exact opposite is that we would, we would, it would be our product, um, that's, in consulting contracts and up there, where that's usually the way it is. The other thing is that, uh.
It also says we're to reuse those contracts, or those plans are in it for any other project that we have to compensate them for.
Yeah, which, if we retain ownership, if we retain ownership, we wouldn't have to do that. Also, it talks about, there's, and, and councilman Kelly pointed this out, that's the one thing I saw in here that caused me, uh, a little bit of an issue, but councilman Kelly was also noticing that there's several places in here where we're indemnifying, we're, we're basically indemnifying the heck out of these people, it looks like. Um, uh, and the one that I saw, I think it was paragraph 21, that says that, um, even if they're, even if they're negligent, it's, it's, they're only liable, we'll, we'll, we will only hold them liable to the extent of their contract amount, um, so they could do something particularly heinous, and we could be on the hook for that. Uh, I, I don't see that as probably happening, I mean, but we, we have to, I think we have to look at the worst-case scenario. Yeah.
Do you think we ought to table this and have 10 of you?
Well, I think, yeah, I think that, um, it, perhaps a, a better, um, this addendum could be better written to, and I don't know what, Jessica, I would, you know, I don't know if this is common practice, it, it looks like it's.
It looks like a pretty form, it looks pretty like something that they use on a routine basis.
It's heavily weighted.
I was limited to you guys to kind of find those nuances, but I know they do a lot of, uh, work with the highway department with state-type projects. It looked pretty like maybe they were just using something they always use. Um, but again, I, I don't have an issue if we need to wait. The only thing that I would, the only reason I was wanting to try to get something approved is to continue their work project, progress, because we are on a kind of a time, time schedule.
If you could get, yeah, we could probably take this up next week, I think. If you could get me a copy of this, you know, like, so I could print it off, I can't really print it off.
Sure.
But there's a couple of things in here, the indemnification, and then us, I think we should own those plans.
I agree with that.
I think it's a good question.
I was looking more at the dollar amounts.
Yeah, well, in the legal terms of the term.
I was gonna let that legal stuff, that's what you guys.
And I'll also send you email on some planning files also.
Okay, please.
I think we.
That would be great.
I'll, I'll, I'll.
Please.
But there's, but you're right, it's, it's one side.
It's heavily weighted.
And now, the way the state usually does it, they do the contract, the engineer, I think, has to sign their contract, the way they do it, you know?
Maybe they learned.
When you roll downhill.
Yeah, they, they.
They learned.
That's right, they took the state stuff and put their name on the indemnification.
And then I think we'll table this and tell you two to consult with Jessica, and then we'll get back with QK4.
I'll forward that on to you.
Okay.
The copy, so that you can mark it up.
Okay, we've got, uh, next order is, uh, HRB recommendations, Tim.
Does anybody have a issue on one of these that needs to recue? Now that makes it simpler. Uh, sure, yes, mayor, the, um, we have the recommendations from the February, uh, Tuesday, February 20th, 2018 meeting. Uh, COA 1805 Kevin and Shannon Satterley, applicant's owner requests to install a new roof at 516 North Third Street. Recommendation to approve, approval to install the proposed new roof with black shingles. COA 1806 Crystal Durbin, applicant, Don Bud Construction owner, request to install new signage at 303 North Third Street. Recommendation, approval to install the proposed signage. COA 1804 On The Go Foods applicant, Norma Rapier owner, request permission to install signage at 458 East Stephen Foster Avenue. Recommendation, approval to install the proposed signage with the following conditions. Conditions: The applicant will first consider the possibilities of putting the sign on the front of the building or over the windows and obtaining a larger portion of the freestanding sign. The final sign design and placement must be approved by the preservation coordinator. COA 1807 Brandy Manningly, uh, slash Keans Depot Inc. owner, request permission to install signage at 8 Old Bloomfield Road. Recommendation, approval to install, install the proposed signage. COA 1808 Terry Gohegan, applicant owner, request permission to alter the front porch at 116 East of Stephen Foster Avenue. Recommendation, approval to make the proposed alterations.
Okay, thank you, Kim. Uh, I guess we, since these are all recommendations for approval with one has conditions, uh, we do all these.
All one, two, three.
And I would ask for a motion then for approve the recommendations of HRB on COA 1805, 1806, 1804 with conditions, 1807, and 1808.
So moved, mayor.
Second. The councilman Williams, the second, councilman Kelly, any other discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Thank you. Okay, we've got, uh, the packet of requests from Bluegrass Christian Academy, they want to use, uh, Blue Parkway Drive for a fundraising, uh, walk on April 21st. You can see they want to start at the Baptist Church, Parkway Baptist, and then go down to Flyers Food and turn around and come back with the runners are going to do it twice, or the, uh, one, uh, the 10K would do it twice. And then there would be off-duty police officers there to assist with, and volunteers to assist with traffic control. So, I suppose you've got a puzzled look on your face.
I'm good.
Mayor, if I may, the only question that I would have, and that's, as all of you all know, Parkway Drive is a heavily industrialized area with a lot of heavy traffic. Uh, and I would just ask the chief if she thinks that an off-duty, one off-duty officer would be sufficient, you know, for public safety there. I, I know that, that area well, and there's probably a lot of heavy traffic there, is that?
One second.
I definitely would like the organizers to come in and meet with us, so we could, uh, make sure that they have adequate staffing for events like that, because I don't think that one or two off-duty officers would be enough for traffic control. So I, I think that when they're going to do, uh, events like that, that we would need to meet with them in, in advance to make sure that we can make sure that it's adequately staffed.
And it also states that they would, uh, they would consult with the, uh, property owners or the business owners after they have our approval, which is probably, should be the other way around. Um, I think these type of events are a great thing, but, you know, that, that could be.
We've got some time, it's not until April 21st, and, uh, if you're, if you agree that we could have, uh, Bluegrass Christian Academy consult with, uh, other businesses and industries back there, and then ask them to come meet with you, and then if you're comfortable, then you can make a recommendation back to us.
I think that'd be a great idea.
Okay, is everybody okay with that? All right. Okay, we've got, uh, if anybody had a chance to review the minutes from the last meeting, if there's no additions or corrections, we've approved them by unanimous consent. Okay, if there's no additions or corrections, then. Okay, uh, under ordinances, uh, we need to introduce our first reading, B 2018 dash zero four, related to Chapter 156 Drainage Control. We've got to introduce.
Yes, mayor. Mayor, if it'd be okay, I'd like to introduce, uh, ordinance number B 2018 dash 04, Chapter 156 Drainage Control, and ask it to be read by senior attorney.
Yes, sir. Ordinance number B 2018 04, An Ordinance Amending and Adopting As amended an Ordinance Relating to Chapter 156 Drainage Control of the City of Barstown's Code of Ordinances. The City Council of Bar, uh, the City Council of the City of Barstown, Kentucky does, uh, ordain as follows: That the amendments made to Chapter 156 Drainage Control, Section Bonds, Maintenance, Assurance and Fees, subsection 156.32 Fees and Security of the City of Barstown Code of Ordinances as follows. Uh, bonds, maintenance, assurance and fees. 156.32 Fees and securities. A, strike, land disturbance permit, add permits. One, add land disturbance permit. A land disturbance permit must be obtained from the Office of the City Engineer when land disturbance activities are to be performed for sites as defined per the city engineering department's fee schedule for encroachment work and land disturbance activities. Hereafter referred to as fee schedule. Strike. A minimum performance bond of $500 shall accompany the submittal of each land disturbance permit as required. The bond is fully refundable provided the entrance and all improvements are constructed as specified on the permit and the approved, the approved improvement plans. All areas within the right, public right-of-way and stormwater facilities must have vegetation established and functioning as designed before releasing the bond. This includes certification for detention ponds and other control facilities as required. If installation of sidewalk along the public street is required, the bond amount shall include the value of sidewalk at a minimum of $10 per linear foot of walk. All sidewalks must meet ADA standards in strike. Number two, add, moved from B, uh, in the, in the addition, encroachment permits, uh, permits, strike, the S for permits. An encroachment permit must be obtained, add, from the Office of the City Engineer, uh, in the addition. When any work is to be performed on, in city right-of-way, strike, the Office of the City Engineer, in strike. The permit shall cover only one specified, strike, piece of work, add, encroachment activity. Such right-of-way encroachments include permanent or temporary entrances, installation or repair of sidewalks, curb cuts, ditch work, or any other activities in the public right-of-way that may impact proper drainage or drain, uh, damage public infrastructure, end addition. A drawing sketch and/or description of the work shall be provided, strike. The applicant must provide security in the form of a bond or certified check for the work in the amount of not less than $2,000, and shall cover the cost to put the right-of-way indoor street and its appurtenances back to its original condition. A representative from the city shall inspect the completed work and accept it prior to returning the indemnity, end strike. All work shall be done in accordance with, uh, all city ordinances, regulations, and standards. Add, refer to Chapter 96 Streets, Curves, and Sidewalks for more information, end addition. Uh, number two, uh, strike, number two, add three timeframe in the addition. The permit holder should have 12 months, one-year strike time, end strike, from the date of permit strike issue in, uh, end strike, add issuance, to construct the entrance, add encroachments, and/or land disturbance activities in accordance with the permit. Failure to complete the work properly within this one-year timeframe shall be reasons for forfeiture of the bond. If work is not completed properly within one-year timeframe, no further permits will be issued to the permit holder until the property comes into compliance with this ordinance. Add, extensions may be approved by the city engineer or designate. Add, number four, bonds, and this is all the, an addition. A minimum performance bond shall accompany the submittal of each permit as required. Bond value shall be no less than $500 as described in the fee schedule, and shall be an amount sufficient to cover the cost of the improvements as approved by the city engineer. Such items may be bonded. Such items to be bonded may include, but are not limited to, erosion control measures and their maintenance, construction of stormwater facilities as described in this chapter, all encroachment work, including entrances, sidewalks, curb cuts, utility crossings, et cetera. The bond is fully refundable provided all improvements are constructed as specified on the permit and the approved, uh, improvement plans. The design engineer shall submit certifications for detention ponds and other control facilities as required to the Office of City Engineer. A representative of, of the city shall inspect the completed work to ensure all areas within the public right-of-way and stormwater facilities have vegetation established and are functioning as designed before releasing the bond, that, end the addition. Strike, three, add five permit fees, end addition. All land disturbance, add, and encroachment, end addition. Permits shall have, strike, an administrative fee as follows with a minimum of $10, end strike. Add, a permit fee to cover administrative inspection costs shall not be less than $50 and no more than $5,000. All permit fees are due at the time of the application and shall be assessed according to the fee schedule. End addition. Strike, A, non-living slash non-commercial areas, $10, i.e. decks, garages, storage buildings and the like, no bond required. Strike, B, mobile home slash residential living area, $50, additions, uh, slash commercial up to 5,000 square feet. Uh, strike, C, residential slash commercial greater than 5,000 square feet, $100. Uh, add, six, late fee. A late fee shall be assessed to permits when construction activities begin prior to the land disturbance permit being issued. The late fee shall be equal in addition to the original permit fee, i.e. late fee equals original permit fee, um, colon revised permit fee equal late fee plus original permit fee, um, end addition. B, um, add, move to A, two, review fees. Projects must go through the plan review process, shall be charged, that, plans that must go through the plan review process shall be charged a review fee per the fee schedule. Review fee shall not, shall be not less than $50, nor more than, nor, nor more than $5,000. All review fees are due at the time of the plan's submittal. No permits shall be issued until all review fees have been paid, end addition. Strike, encroachment permits. An encroachment permit shall be obtained when any work is to be performed in the city right-of-way from the Office of the City Engineer. The permit shall cover only one specified piece of work. A drawing sketch and/or description of the work shall be provided. A applicant must provide a security in the form of a bond or certified check for the work in the amount of not less than $2,000, and shall cover the cost to put the right-of-way indoor street and its appurtenances back to its original condition. A representative from the city shall inspect the completed work and accept it prior to returning the indemnity. All work must be done in accordance with all city ordinances, regulations, and standards. Future maintenance of the encroachment is the responsibility of the permit holder, end strike. Add, one, for new residential, commercial, and industrial developments that require a SWPPP and/or SWMP, per this ordinance, review fee shall be assessed according to the fee schedule. Add, two, review of development plans where infrastructure shall be taken over by the City of Barstown and become a part of the public road and/or utility systems, i.e. water, sewer, streets, et cetera. Additional plan review fees shall be assessed according to the fee schedule. Add, three, resubmittal fee. Incomplete plans and/or submittal packages will not be reviewed until all required documents have been received by the city. Plans and/or documents of the submittal package requiring major revisions may be reassessed, may be assessed. A resubmittal fee equal to one-half the original review fee. Revisions that take place after the approval and issuance of a land disturbance permit may be assessed the same resubmittal fees. Add, C, recording fees for sites that require documents to be recorded by the Nelson County Clerk's Office. Recording fees shall be charged per the Nelson County, County Clerk's fee schedule for land records. Such documents may include, but are not limited to, deed of easements, maintenance agreements, subdivision agreements, et cetera. The city will handle recording on behalf of the permitee and will collect fees at the time of plan's submittal. Strike, C, add D, um, as a heading for establishment of the Stormwater Management Fund. Strike, D, add E, purposes of the fund, oh, excuse me, under two, above, under the new D, um, under number two. All revenues collected from the stormwater management fees, fee for grants, permit fees, and other charges collected in the stormwater management program shall be deposited to the fund. The City Council may make additional appropriations to the fund. All disturbance, all disbursements from the fund shall be for the purpose of the fund set forth in division, strike, D, add E. Uh, strike, D, and add E, purposes of the fund. The fund shall be used for the following purposes, and that is the only addition there. This ordinance shall take effect and be in full force immediately on its passion, passage, and approval and publication as required by law.
This is just the first reading, we'll have to vote, but Jessica, would you mind giving us background then? I know you all have a lot of work on. I know y'all have a lot of work on this and the next ordinance that will be taken up in the fee schedule.
Yes, the, the reason he had to read so much was trying to change a little bit of the format and the way the ordinance was, is set up such that it's clear when you're looking for what you're doing, what you need to do and how much those things cost. And what I was trying to do, our fees for permits have not really been adjusted since the inception of the drainage ordinance in nineteen ninety-one. I believe our fees for, uh, encroachment permits were, was fifty dollars in nineteen ninety-one. In two thousand and six, they were amended to, actually some permits went down to ten dollars and then stayed at fifty and then larger projects maxed out at a hundred dollars. Uh, what I'm finding is that we've never had review fees and just with the immense growth that we've had in our community over the last five years, the number of permits through our office has gone from twenty-fourteen, from around forty-four permits, to last year we had eighty-four permits. Uh, from, we had maybe in twenty-fourteen, I think we might have done sixty or so side inspections. Last year we did over six-hundred-and-fifty construction site inspections. All of that comes with a cost, you know, to the city. And these inspections and administrative costs, a lot of those things are a result of the Clean Water Act and the city of Barstown's, because we're a phase-two community, we're an MS four, basically, we're, have our own municipal separate stormwater system with the permit with the division of water, but has a lot of requirements under that. And because of those unfunded requirements, we've been absorbing a lot of expenses in these last several years as a result of that increased, uh, regulation for us. Uh, so what we've tried to do is really go through over the last several years and really start calculating how much time it's taking administratively, how much time it's taking to do reviewing, how much time it takes to inspect each site and create a classification based on how large a site is, what we're doing. And we have really good data to back up all of these fees that we've created. Uh, so I also wanted to create some flexibility because again, it's, it's time-consuming to read an ordinance quite so long every time you want to amend a fee, uh, to be keeping up with your costs as time goes on. And we need to be kind of keeping a better eye on that more than what we've been doing, you know? Life's changed, it's been over ten years since we've had any kind of increase with that. So, having that fee schedule set up with a range, I think is going to be really helpful to help us, uh, fill those funding gaps a little bit and allow those users to kind of help pay for, for what we're being required to do. Also comparing it with some other communities and just other permits and things that are done within our own community, you know, we were really low, you know, just looking at, if you get a building permit and you have three inspections, you know, that's over three hundred dollars for three inspections. Our biggest one is a hundred dollars is our max fee and, you know, we might be going out anywhere from nine times to, golly, if a project goes on for two years, we could be out there twenty-four times. So, especially larger sites where they're longer. So, just, just the changing with the times and looking for ways to kind of fill some of these gaps, especially as we look at the, uh, retirement situation and trying to find, find ways to come up with those gaps in funding and this, this is general fund type things too, uh, when it comes to drainage and permitting. So, also wanted to create, again, because a lot of these things coming in, we've had an increased staffing, you know, to keep up with these requirements and keep up with the development and the growth. Um, so again, having, having a fee associated and helping promote people so that I don't get lots of plans sent in, you know, four and five times, partial, hey, these are forty percent complete, now I'm eighty percent complete, I know I don't have everything I need, but can you give me some feedback, I need to get started. Uh, trying to just make, help our office be more efficient and do better time management wise and help kind of promote people to, uh, kind of get everything they need upfront and so we can move through that process quicker, you know, that allows us to get, be more timely getting back to them. So, that's, that's essentially the basis. And, and also creating some type of late fee was kind of critical, just because enforcement can take up a lot of time and that enforcement for these type things tends to fall back to my office. Having a means that if someone goes out and, you know, clears six acres and doesn't have any erosion control measures and neighbors are calling, going, oh my goodness, what's going on over here and I don't have any record, having a means to have a late fee set up so that they can come in, get a permit, but there's still a little penalty without having to go through the enforcement process. We just have taken in and had some, had that fee to help take care of the fact that we've had to go out in additional time, write letters and, and just do those, have to handle those administrative items with respect to what's happening in the city.
Jessica, I have a question.
Mm-hmm.
At the end of E here, where it says purposes of the fund, the fund shall be used for the following purposes, it's got a colon there, I don't see anything after that.
That's because all those items under, under E and what used to be, what's now D, were existing items within the ordinance.
We didn't amend it.
So, we didn't amend any of those things. There's the ability in our ordinance to create, for instance, for, uh, development sites that maybe have some very unique, um, site constraints, whether it be topography, maybe they're sitting on solid rock or, uh, whatever the case may be, there's going to be some very rare exceptions that we would have that case in town, in our town, where it's unfeasible for them to follow our drainage control ordinance with respect to detention requirements and/or water quality requirements. There's an option for them to pay an in lieu of fee to go into a fund where we as a community could create a project within that watershed that would help with that drainage control, you know, those detention, flooding, potential issues or water quality issues. So, we have that mechanism in place. Uh, so far we've not had, had anybody, uh, use that in lieu of fee, particularly because it, it'd have to be pretty extenuating circumstances for someone not to be able to do that because there's so many choices now.
But, but the shorter version of that is, is that it exists right now.
It exists, we did change it.
So that's why it's blank. We just changed the heading.
There's ten of them, ten things in ordinance are listed and it's basically a cost of the program. If you want to just summarize them all in there, like the cost of, the extra engineering, labor and things like that that can be used for that, we'll, you, we got you and insisted us. Those, all the site reviews and our labor is probably one of the reasons why we had to get it.
Well, some more help, right?
And that's still even a different fund, you know, this is a different pool of money that is recommended again by our permit that we have with the state, that there is an in pay-in lieu of fee option and that money can only be used to go towards a project in that watershed for those, the services.
But, but the fees itself go...
No, that's just going into the street department, you know, fund to help pay, or street department budget to help pay our salaries and our administrative costs and inspector.
A lot of this was driven by enforcement though. We've had a couple of cases where we've gone to code enforcement board and not been successful. Then we went to the county attorney's office and of course Matthew just, he doesn't want to see us, but, uh, and we've not had a lot of, um, we, you know, it's not, it's not particularly satisfactory, it's something about, it's like there's no, there was no penalty to somebody coming in after the fact and getting a permit. And so when talking to Matthew and with Jessica, it's like, well, let's start talking about late fees and things like that. Uh, and so that's a, that's a big driver here. Uh, in terms of the fee schedule, we asked the League of Cities, how can we, how can we do something a little more flexible but yet, you know, still have an ordinance? And they said, adopt a range and then adopt a fee schedule administratively. So we've done that. Uh, and last but not least, an issue throughout the state of Kentucky is people will come in and I, if you heard Jessica carefully, people will submit plans and ask our engineering people to troubleshoot it for them. To say, here it is, what do we need? And they review it and they say, you need these things and do it punchlers. So we're engineering for them, is what we're doing. And so now, they're going to pay for that, just like they would out in the private sector. Um, so with a re-inspection fee. So we're not troubleshooting for these people anymore, we're, we're doing legitimate, and that'll cut down on staff time and if they use staff time, they should compensate for that. And that's what this is trying to accomplish.
Jessica, under B, paragraph one, you got, I know, one acronym is Stormwater Management Plan, SWPPP.
Yes.
What's that acronym?
Those are explained farther up in the ordinance, they didn't have any changes, but SWPPP is Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan. And then the SM, uh, MP is the Stormwater Management Plan. Tried to eliminate any paragraphs that absolutely did not need to be in here.
Thank you.
Okay, this is the first reading. Any other questions, Jessica or Tim? Okay, good then, I need someone to introduce, uh, ordinance B, two thousand eighteen zero five, chapter fifty-one, Solid Waste Management.
Mayor, I'd like to introduce B, two thousand eighteen dash zero five, chapter fifty-one, Solid Waste Management, and ask it to be read in full.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir. Ordinance number B, two thousand eighteen dash oh five, an ordinance amending and adopted as amended, amended section fifty-one oh two, Storage of Solid Waste. C, section fifty-one oh three, Collection of Solid Waste, A, one, D, two and J. In section fifty-one oh nine, Fees slash Charges, C, of chapter fifty-one, Solid Waste Management of the City of Barstown, code of ordinances now be it therefore ordained by the City of Barstown, that sections fifty-one oh two and fifty-one oh three be amended as follows. Fifty-one oh two, Storage of Solid Waste. C, to add the sentence, the weight of any container in its contents shall not exceed forty pounds. Containers that are larger than that described above will not be lifted, therefore all waste must be bagged. No loose material we, will be picked up. Uh, fifty-one oh three, Collection of Solid Waste, under A, City Responsibility Defined Subsection one. Uh, the city provides normal curbside solid waste collection, special bulky item pickup, tree limb pickup and leaf collection. Loose leaves will, are collected during publicly announced and defined time period in the fall as needed. Strike, recyclable car park is collected at three designated locations, public parking lot on West Flagee Avenue, farmer's market lot on East Flagee and, in strike. Add, recyclable items are collected at the, in the Guthrie Opportunity Center on Nutter Drive during normal, during business hours. Um, under subsection D, uh, city solid waste collection services and items that, uh, shall be placed at the collection point for each service. Two, subsection A, add subsection A, the intent of the bulky rubbish collection service is to pick up the occasional broken appliance or furniture item, not to relieve any renter, landlord or property owner, the responsibility of moving unwanted or left items from a move or eviction. No sit-outs will be picked up. C, subsection K, Solid Waste Subject to Specific Rules. Add, subsection B, Tree Limbs Collection is intended for typical landscaping maintenance, broken limbs after a storm, minor trimming, et cetera. The service is not to be used to remove debris from major tree trimming activities, whole tree removal or relieve a professional tree service from the responsibility of hauling away that which it has been cut, end addition. Under J, Prohibitions, subsection one, Hazardous Waste, add, such as syringes, used needles, vials or petroleum products. Number two, Liquid Waste, add, such as paint, poisons, acid, explosive, caustic, infectious or biohazard waste materials. Three, Tires, add, or Car Parts. Four, Construction and Demolition Waste, add, of such size and weight that would cause damage to equipment such as rolls of carpet or pads. Seven, add number seven, Items Left by Tenants or Eviction, add, section eight, Professional Cut Tree Limbs, Trunks, Root Balls, et cetera. Uh, fifty-nine, oh, fifty-one oh nine, Fees Charges, add, subsection C, Cardboard Collection. The city has added the service of cardboard collection for businesses. The city will rent nine-yard cardboard containers to business, businesses and charge for each pickup. The following collection rates are based upon emptying the cardboard container and delivering the cardboard to the recycling center. Add, Monthly Cardboard Rental Fee, add, five dollars and forty-two cents. Add, Pickups Per Week and Monthly Collection Fees. Um, I assume this is add even though it's not underlined. One, seventy, oh, seventy dollars and two cents. Two, a hundred and forty dollars and five cents. Three, two hundred and ten dollars and seven cents. Uh, add, Cost Per Pickup Equals, add, sixteen dollars and twenty-eight cents. Add, Subsection one, the cardboard, cardboard must be broken down and stacked neatly into containers. No trash is permitted to be disposed of in the cardboard container. Excessive trash may lead to added charges. C, class five, Extra Labor Fee in this section. Add, Subsection two, the availability of cardboard containers may determine the ability of service. All revenue from the sale of collected cardboard goes to the Guthrie Opportunity Center. All policies may be, other policies may be adopted to maintain and improve the collaborative cardboard recycling efforts. All ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict are hereby repealed to the extent of that conflict. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect following the publication, in summary as required by law.
Okay, Jessica, again, this is first reading, you want to give us some background as, like, they hear this.
Yes, the, the biggest thing is just the point of this, these amendments were just to create some clarifications. Um, we take a lot of calls every day, uh, from our, uh, solid waste customers asking, why we didn't pick something up? Um, why, why did you pick it up this time? Why didn't you do it the last time? Vice versa. And just trying to provide some clarification so that that communication can be portrayed to, uh, the customer in, such that, you know, if you have one of those large trash cans on wheels with the big handle, that trash can is over thirty-five gallons, but, you know, a lot of us have those and everything in that particular contain, container needs to be bagged because a guy's not going to be able to physically lift that and dump that into the truck. So they're just going to be reaching in. So oftentimes that's a common call, why did they leave things in my can? Well, it's because it's bigger. Um, so we wanted just to provide that, uh, that clarification in there. Uh, same thing for, uh, the bulky item, uh, collection service, that we currently don't really have an additional fee or pickups for that. That's a service that we provide to our residents as part of their monthly garbage rate. So we wanted to make sure we clarified that that service is intended for, you know, someone got a new refrigerator or they got a new couch or maybe, you know, the dog tore up my recliner and I had to get a new one or a piece of furniture broke or just the, you know, certain items, normal items. It was never inten, it's not intended for, to relieve anybody from evicting somebody out of their rental property and just leaving all the belongings out at the street and having the city come pick that up free of charge. Uh, and that's, having that conversation and same thing with people who have that as a business, as apartment houses. Uh, again, someone moves out, just taking everything out and, and the city picking that up for you. Not that we won't pick up if a resident of an apartment, again, has those same things I just described and they give us a call, we'll come and get that, you know, we'll come get that mattress so long as it's not infested with, with, with bedbugs or something that's a risk to our employees and so forth, but, you know, we will do that. But it's pretty, it's pretty obvious to our folks when it is a set out, you know, it's usually you can kind of tell the difference. Uh, same kind of thing with, um, with our tree service, our tree limb service. We wanted to make sure that that was clear, that, you know, if you hire someone to come in and cut down your tree, you know, don't, don't just leave it by the street for the city, but, you know, that really should be taken care of as part of that service that that company is providing to you. And, so again, just making those clarifications, to be able to communicate that and have it a clear place for our customer service reps and for, uh, my engineering assistant Beth to communicate those things and have it backed up within the ordinance. Um, I think there, that was always the intent of the ordinance, but it wasn't always super clear to be able to communicate those things. The other item that was new was we do have several, I believe we have thirteen cardboard containers out in the community. Uh, some businesses are utilizing those and have been able to, uh, reduce their dumpster pickups, you know, reduce their solid waste monthly bills and/or, you know, even get a smaller dumpster. Um, and so that's, that's really a good thing that we get that cardboard in the recycling center and have that out of the landfill. Um, but also the process of collecting that, it, it is more labor-intensive and does take an additional, it's not something we're doing out of the garbage truck where we just have one driver, you know, we have a, a separate employee that drives around and manually removes the cardboard from the container, adds it to a trailer and then unloads it at the Guthrie Opportunity Center. Opportunity Center. So just trying to create a fee schedule because we were seeing a drop in revenue because they were able to, you know, reduce their contribution to their waste, but yet we were seeing, you know, because it was so popular, we weren't really getting any money back to help compensate for our man-hours. And that's really all we're doing, is just to cover our man-hours to pick it up. So.
One little question. Of course, the ordinance might answer, yeah, liquid waste, and are you adding paint? Fiscal court, I always understood if you open up the paint cans and let it dry, of course, then it's not liquid anymore, that you could throw that away. Is that?
Yeah, as long as the paint is dry, or it's been absorbed with, you know, kitty litter or sawdust or something like that, and that's as much a landfill disposal rule too. And, you know, what we wanted is to make clear, like, just a can of paint unopened, you know, with a lid on it, you know, it needs to be dry. We've had, we all know in town when that does happen, if it gets pushed in the compactor and you get a white line or whatever color running down the road, just trying to make that. If it is paint, maybe I could add, paint shall be dry, but.
It says liquid waste, so when it's dry, it's no longer.
Right, if it's dry now, it's no longer liquid, but.
I guess I was just asking for clarification, other than the change of order. Plus, for my own benefit, I don't.
Right, right, well, sometimes people go, I had some cans of paint, how come you didn't pick those up? Well, that's liquid. Well, it's half-dried, well.
I have one question also, Jessica, just to clarify for my own benefit. How would we determine the difference, or the difference between a set out and bulky rubbish collection? I mean, if we're saying if they can't set these items out, if it's a set out and they cleaned out someone's apartment or whatever, how would we make that distinction between what has been set out? I mean, would we actually deny that person to, or not pick it up, and then they would have to come to the city to convince the city otherwise?
Well, they generally do that. They call us up and try to, you know, explain what their situation is, but there's other, again, other portions in the ordinance. It explains very specifically size, you know, of the pile of rubbish. So if it's basically more than what can fit in the back of a pickup truck, that's considered excessive, and oftentimes you can kind of tell what's there because it's like bags of trash and just lots of just different kinds of things. So again, we're not trying to prevent people or discourage people from doing their spring cleaning, but again, you can kind of see too, the frequency which folks are doing it. You know, we go there and they have massive amounts every three months.
The workers know.
Yeah, the workers are very keen on that.
I'm just worried that we would encourage, you know, one of the reasons.
Like this?
Yeah.
That's fluid.
That's pretty excessive.
That's pretty excessive. It was far beyond.
And one of the reasons that we do this is offer it as a city service, is that this doesn't end up in someone's field or someone's.
Right, exactly.
So we don't want to encourage that to happen again by over, I guess, over-penalizing someone for putting it out.
Well, if it's metal out there, it won't sit there very long. They wouldn't worry about it.
Yeah, but mattresses end up in ditches and.
We've had that issue before.
Jessica, I would just like to say, I like to commend the men that do pick it up. Recently, running through certain neighborhoods, there is an excessive amount of items that are set out that clearly are not within the guidelines that you spoke of. And I think that the property owners, the landlords, should be accountable for these type of set outs. You go through and there's toilets and sinks, rows of garbage bags, wood pieces sitting out for these young men to pick up, and that's just totally uncalled for. In other cities, that's not allowed. And so, I mean, I think it's very special. Barstown's very unique when it comes to taking care of their customers, but here lately, I think that it's abusive. It's quite abusive, and it's hard on the employees that have to not only pick up their regular load, but then pick up excessive amounts of garbage, or rubbish, or items that are in the house that they're renovating, or trying to, they've evicted someone. I mean, I think that somehow we, as a city, may need to do some updates, whether it's Facebook, Blast, or whatever, to get this information out, to let them know that, you know, we're willing to work with you, but also work with us. You're not charging them anything. In other places, there's a charge for that. And also, not only is it a charge, but, you know, the worst-case scenario is that garbage stops, you know, at that certain property, and that harms everyone, and we're not even doing that. So I think it's a, you know, we need to come together and work together, the customer and the city, so that we're not hurting our employees as well.
Right, and we want to continue just for those reasons, to have the service because we are special. We don't have a lot of excessive, you know, dump sites around our community because we offer this service, but I think, again, trying to, again, make some clarifications so that it's not, so that, again, major apartment houses aren't over abusing that. And it's pretty obvious, I know it may sound like, how do you tell, but our guys that do this every single day, they kind of know, they kind of see what kinds of things are in there, they can look to see the, you know, they're by your house every day, they can kind of see what's been going on, but again, we want to keep it available, especially for folks who, you know, may not have a pickup truck. It's not as easy for them to run their appliance or clean out some of their old stuff out of their garage. It's not that we don't want to pick it up, but again, we are just trying to minimize and clarify for folks that are maybe using it against the intent of what the community set the service up for.
Mary and Greg and Tanya, this is a really hot.
It gets heated, too, man.
Passion about.
Very passionate about it.
There's a lot of, you know, this is, this additional detail, I think, will help us when we're trying to make that determination and let them know this is not a commercial operation that we provide for, you know, property owners and apartments and all that. And some are just trying to game the system and get this stuff picked up for free. I would make one correction. In paragraph two at the bottom of the cardboard, the proceeds of revenue from the cardboard, it does not actually go to the Guthrie Opportunity Center. That revenue goes to the Community Care.
Okay, that's, that's good.
They actually provide the employees as well as the supervision for the recycling center.
Perfect. I'll make that change.
Put that's under the umbrella of the Guthrie Opportunity Center.
Well.
I'm just trying to have.
Guthrie Opportunity Center does not receive that revenue. Community Care receives that revenue.
All right, but on behalf of, for that service for the Guthrie, I mean, is it used for that?
Well, no, that money doesn't come to, she's paying the employees, basically. Community Care has those employees under their contract, they're not city employees, so the revenue doesn't come to the center, it goes to Community Care.
Okay.
They provide all the supervision and the staffing.
At the Guthrie.
Yes.
Okay, that's cool.
I just didn't want to be misinformed, like, the Guthrie Opportunity Center foundation sending revenue from the recycling, because they don't, they don't. Any other questions on that?
Mayor, can it say to the operation of the Guthrie Opportunity Center, perhaps?
It's not, it's the Community Care. It's a different entity right there.
It's a separate entity, just like Nelson County Industries is a separate entity out there. Then you have On the Go Foods, which is another entity out there. Then you have Rebar, it's another business operating out there. I just didn't want any misunderstanding. Any other questions on the changes to the solid waste ordinance? And then reports from staff and committees, Joe, Councilman Buckman, do you have anything of the bulk of your cemetery meeting February 15th? The minutes I know are included in the pack.
I think it would just, typical cemetery meeting, wasn't it, Mary? Nothing?
It was.
We discussed, once again, some of the landscaping projects, probably the biggest thing we've got going on right now. That'll be completed sometime in the spring, hopefully. And nothing, nothing real major there.
Stuff later on, when we've got the municipal order for monument regulations, we've got that's a little later. Okay. Then next, under staff and committee reports, we have the fee schedule for the enforcement work and land disturbance activities. Jessica, would you want to?
We've kind of already talked about this. This is just the fees that I've proposed in order to kind of help cover some of our expenses for these activities.
Yeah, this is the fee schedule that will go into effect upon the adoption of the ordinance.
Is that the second vote, or is?
No, the way we set it up is it's, you all set the range, and Jessica can administratively adopt the fee schedule. She can't exceed that range, though.
Right.
And again, that was KLC's solution to our issue.
Any other questions on fee schedules? Okay. Chief, you want to discuss the proposed donation for the United Ride for Hope in DC?
Yes, so I'm here today just to kind of talk about proposed donations to the Law Enforcement United, and basically what that is, is we're coming up on the five-year anniversary of the death of Jason Ellis, and Amy Ellis participates in the Road to Hope ride. And what that is, is it's a ride that kicks off the Memorial Week in May for the memorial up in DC, and it's a 250-mile bike ride, and what it does is, it's a physical challenge that honors the fallen, but it remembers the survivors. And so, it's Team Kentucky, there's members all over the country that ride in this, but Team Kentucky is represented from either law enforcement or members, survivors of fallen police officers from the state of Kentucky, and Amy is riding in that. And so, I, each member that rides in Team Kentucky raises funds for this organization. This organization is 100% volunteer organization, and there's no members, there's no boards, there's no staff that receives salaries. This goes back to the, to support the families of those that have lost loved ones in law enforcement. And it, what it's done for Amy and her children is it sends loved ones to camps and provides counseling, and it does a lot of things for law enforcement across the country. And so, with that being said, not only as the chief of police, but as a mother and as a wife, I want to show Amy that, that we haven't forgotten her or her family as we come up on five years of the death of our officer, and that we support her and that we always will be there as a police agency and as a community. And so, anybody that fills the need, that wants to give a donation to her, it doesn't go to her, but it goes in honor of her, to this organization that helps not only her and her children, but anyone that has lost a loved one in law enforcement that keeps that going. That is something that we want to do over the next couple of weeks to see if we can, to help those that are fundraising for this great event that helps those that have faced such a tragedy in their lifetime.
You all are coordinating to try to get the message out on this and hopefully encourage the local community to donate to this fund.
We are.
Try to collectively make a significant contribution if we can from the community, so we give them some more publicity. Hopefully, the media will help us on that, and social media as well will get it worked out. I guess they can, we'll get that out to the media, and the donations can come through the local Barstown Police Department.
They can, and they can also go to Law Enforcement United National if they want to kind of read about the organization and see the programs that they offer. They offer kids camps and youth adult camps, the Officer Down Memorial Page, and then can read more about the organization and the Road to Hope with the ride that's coming up. Like I said, it's a 250-mile ride, and so there's a lot of information on that, but anyhow, we'll be collecting that over the next couple of weeks that we can present to Amy. The checks would be written out to Law Enforcement United, and so we can coordinate that.
Is it only, so only write the checks out, or is it online?
You can do it online also.
Are you going to post it on the Facebook or?
Yeah, I've got some information printed here from their website, so if you want that as well, the media is welcome to that also.
Do you have any kind of bill for this period? No?
You know, I think any amount would be awesome. I think each person that participates, they try to raise $1,500 per person that participates, and anything in excess of that just goes to other members that maybe wasn't able to raise that money and just goes into the fund for camps.
That'd be a good start.
That'd be an awesome start, yes. And just to show the support that we're still here as a community, five years is, I think, just a great showing of the love of this Barstown community.
Yeah, the question, thank you, Chief, for getting this in front of us, getting it out to the community so we can kind of support Ellis's family and his memory. Okay, no unfinished business. We have a municipal order 2018-01 for the Barstown Cemetery Monument Regulations and Guidelines.
Mayor, I've confirmed that I don't have to read this in total, but I will read the addition if that's, if you'd like. What this does is it would be, you'd be adopting the monument requirements and regulations for the Barstown Cemetery as recommended by the Barstown Cemetery Commended Committee, Amending Municipal Order 2009-06 and 2016-14, and it would change paragraph three by adding, "A monument company permit shall be completed and submitted to the cemetery sextant no earlier than two weeks before the date the monument is to be set." After two weeks, if the monument has not been set, a new monument company permit will need to be submitted to the cemetery sextant. During the two-week period, if the marking flags are removed or damaged, the city will replace them. So that adds that to paragraph number three.
Okay, Mary, you got any background on that?
Yes, it's just to help us be a little more efficient. In January, I received four requests from monument companies that weren't going to set their monument until April, and so what we're going to be requiring is for them to not request our guys in Public Works to go out and mark the location unless they're getting ready to do it. So we chose a two-week timeframe. We will ensure that it's marked for them during that time, so if the mowing or the weather removes the flags, we will go out there and reset them with, you know, just a simple request. What prompted this is that we would mark it, and then six to eight weeks later, the monument company would arrive at the cemetery, ready to place their monument, the markings are no longer, the flags are gone, and they have a crew on staff ready to set the monument. So it's inconvenient for them, they're unhappy, it's an inconvenience for our staff to run out there and set it, so we're going to set some parameters. That's all it's designed to do. And there is an error in the last sentence. We'll remove that word "be," and it'll be the city will replace them.
Do I have motion to approve municipal order N 2018-01 to amend the monument regulations and guidelines for the Barstown Cemetery?
I'll make that motion, Mayor, with that one correction, Chief, and.
The motion of Councilman Williams, we have a second?
A second.
Second, Councilman Buckman. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, Speaker, I have a second. Seen none, all in favor, Senator, I would say an aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion is carried. And then we have Municipal Order Number 2018-02, which we've made some wording changes to the positions on the various city council committees.
Yeah, Mayor, it adds to the Electric and Cable TV Committee of the City Council. It adds the Staff Engineer in paragraph five, the Waste Water and Wastewater Committee of the City Council. It strikes Director of Public Works and Engineering and adds Administrative Engineer. And number six, the Cemetery Committee of the City Council, it strikes Director of Public Works and Engineering and adds Staff Civil Engineer. Seven, Street Solid Waste and Transportation Planning Committee of the City Council, it strikes Director of Public Works and Engineering and adds Staff Civil Engineer.
Okay, Jessica, you want to kind of just give some background there? Because Mary Hamilton formerly was the Director of Public Works and Engineering, but now that position's not, Jessica changed it to add Travis's position, who is our Staff Civil Engineer. And I think the first one also was, elected with City Electoral Engineer, was named in there, which with Jeff's retirement, we don't have that position in there, is that correct?
Right, there's not currently anyone in that job title at this time, right now.
So that's really the reason for these changes.
Staff Engineer, is that correct?
Yes, Staff Engineer.
Correct.
Administrator Engineer is?
Larry.
Larry Hamilton. And Staff Civil Engineer is Travis.
Correct.
Right. Okay, and I've asked for motion then to approve these changes for the City Council Committees, Municipal Order Number 2018-02. So will the? Motion of Councilman Shekels, do you have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilman Buckland, is there any other discussion? All in favor, Senator, I would say an aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, thank you. Okay, and then we have a appointment of Paul McCoy, that's a joint appointment from, I think, no, excuse me, that's an appointment by us, City, only to the Barstown Nelson County Tourist Commission for a three-year term. The motion to approve the appointment of Paul McCoy.
Mayor, I'd like to make the motion to, for the appointment of Paul McCoy to the Barstown Nelson County Tourist Commission for the three-year term.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, Senator, I would say an aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. All right, next item on the agenda, is there any members of the council that has anything to bring before the council this evening? Any comments? Okay. And then Cemetery Deeds, we have Grant Douglas Hayden for two graves and Connie Thompson for one grave. Do that by unanimous consent? Okay. Anyone have any announcements? Seen none, then ask for a motion for adjournment. So will the? Motion of Councilman Williams, do you have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilman Buckland. All in favor, Senator, I would say an aye.
Aye.
Opposed? You have adjournments.